Good morning. Thank you for being here. The first item on our agenda this morning, first thing we need to do is have a public hearing. Just to have a public hearing there, and I will read the opening statement for the public hearing. This public hearing held by the Louisville Metro Air Pollution Control Board is called order and is being held pursuant to KRS Chapter 77 and District Regulation. Notice of this hearing has been published pursuant to state law. Oral statements must be presented today. Statements should be concise. If you have a written version of your statement, please submit it to Ms. Hamilton after your presentation. All statements will become a part of the hearing record. There are fifteen amended regulations to be reviewed today. Since there are many regulations to be reviewed, I will ask the district to present all of the regulations first, then we will take public comment on any of the regulations presented, and then we will take questions from the board on any of the regulations presented. Would the staff please present Regulations 1.15, 2.03, 2.05, 2.08, 6.07, 6.09, 6.13, 6.26, 6.31, 7.06, 7.08, 7.12, 7.20, 7.36, and 7.59? Mr. Tally?
Thank you, Dr. Powell. I would like to note upfront that the district is withdrawing Regulation 720 version 3 into consideration. We've been made aware that additional changes may be needed to that regulation before bringing it back to the board.
That was 7.20?
7.20, version 3.
Someone concerns about my credit card. And I can't seem to get rid of it.
Thank you, everybody, for making and braving the weather. Today, the district brings the board's consideration, fourteen regulation changes. Regulation 1.15, version of federal regulations adopted incorporated by reference, version nineteen, is amended to update the date of the incorporation by reference of federal regulations. Regulation 2.03, Authorization to Construct or Operate: Demolition or Renovation Notices, Perfect Requirements, version nine, is amended to remove CO2 equivalents as a basis for major minor source determinations based on court rulings and EPA changes. Regulation 2.05, Prevention of Significant Deterioration of Air Quality, version thirteen, is amended to update the version of federal regulations that is incorporated by reference. Regulation 2.08, E's, version twenty-seven, is updated to eliminate expired provisions and to make some technical corrections to the remaining section. Regulation 6.07, Standards of Performance for Existing Direct Heat Exchangers, version four, is updated to match the effective facility and classification dates between the two regulations and to eliminate the nitrogen oxide standards as they are less stringent than the federal new source performance standards which are incorporated by reference elsewhere. Regulation 6.09, Standards of Performance for Existing Process Operations, version seven, is updated to change the applicability to clarify that it is applicable to, with respect to those pollutants otherwise regulated, and to separate out and reduce redundancy in PM and capacity standards. Regulation 6.33, Standards of Performance for Existing Storage Vessels for Volatile Organic Compounds, version seven, is updated to fix applicability dates which overlap with the new source performance standard in 7.12 and to limit applicability to storage tanks for which there is a political standard. Regulation 6.26, Standards of Performance for Existing Volatile Organic Compound Water Separators, version three, is updated to fix applicability dates which also overlap and to make some other technical corrections. Version, I'm sorry, Regulation 6.31, Standards of Performance for Existing Mislenious Metal Parts and Product Surface Coating Operations, version six, is updated to add record-keeping provisions for facilities which are claiming an exemption. Regulation 706, Standards of Performance for New Direct Heat Exchangers, version three, I should note this as well as 609, 607, 208 are second draft updated in response to comments from the Division for Air Quality. So, version three of 706, draft two, is updated to fix the same applicability dates as in 607 and to eliminate the nonstandards there as well. Regulation 708, Standards of Performance for New Process Operations, version four, is updated to change applicability and clarify with respect to those pollutants not otherwise regulated and separate out redundancy in PM and capacity standards. Regulation 712, Standards of Performance for New Storage Vessels for Volatile Organic Compounds, version seven, is updated to fix applicability dates and to limit applicability to tanks for which there is an effective standard. Regulation 720, Standards of Performance, I'm sorry, that's the one that we are withdrawing from consideration. Regulation 736, Standards of Performance for New Volatile Organic Compound Water Separators, version four, is updated to fix the applicability dates as with 626 and to make other technical corrections. Regulation 7.59, Standards of Performance for New Mislenious Metal Parts and Product Surface Coating Operations, version six, is updated to add record-keeping provisions for those facilities claiming an exemption. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Tally. Does anyone from the public wish to make a statement on any of the regulations presented? Are there any questions by board members on any of the regulations presented? We've gone look at fourteen and withdrawn one. What are all of these numbered regulations? Where are those? If someone wanted to go and read the details, you would not know from your presentation precisely what is going on with these regulations. But I understand that the notice that is given and the opportunity has been there, but just where are they?
The regulations are all available on our website. The current versions are available. You can go to LouisvilleKY.gov/AirPollutionControlDistrict, and on the homepage, there is a link to our regulations. They're separated out there by Regulation 1, 2, 3, 4, 5, 6, 7. The changes to our regulations are on the docket for today's meeting, which is on the proposed action page. In addition to the regulations, there is a red line threat map version of each regulation which highlights exactly what changes are being made, and there are also preliminary regulatory impact assessments there which sort of summarize it a little bit more detail than I did today, so that you don't have to dig through each regulation individually, what changes are being made, and gives reasons for each a little bit more detail. If there are any particular questions or reasons for changes, I'd like to answer them.
And why did we need to do this today with so many regulations?
There are actually sort of two sets here. The regulations in Part One and Two were updates that we make or needed to make annually. 1.15, 205, in particular, we try to update every year to keep in sync with the federal regulations. 208 has needed to be done for a few years. All the changes in Regulations Part Six and Seven were made together because they were all part of a, if anybody can't hear me, let me know, I can speak up for her turn. All the regulations in Part Six and Seven, which are the bulk of these, were made together because they are part, they are the product of a single work group. We got together one work group internally with engineers and other folks from the district to talk about fixes that needed to be made to our new and existing source and performance standards, and all of those changes came from that same work group, so they were made at that same time. And they're all just fixes to those that sort of the engineers have been noticing for some time and are not major changes, but things that sort of make their lives easier for the most part, I think.
Thank you, that's very helpful. Anybody else?
And just to make it clear, the regulations in Part Six are the standards for existing sources, and the regulations in Part Seven are the regulations for new sources, and most of these correspond. So, for example, Regulation 6.07 is the sort of, basically the standard for boilers that are existing, and 706 is the corresponding standard for new boilers. So, they're sort of duplicative in that way, and when you need to change the one, you kind of have to change the other to match up.
Yes?
Just like what you gave a few minutes ago, you gave us the synopsis for each one of these things off.
Yes.
Is there somewhere I can go to get that synopsis that you just said without having the entire?
That will be in the minutes of today's board meeting. I will make sure that's incorporated there. If you would like it, before those minutes are made publicly available, the preliminary regulatory impact assessments are sort of like two pages, three pages on each set of regulations, and that is currently available on the docket for today's meeting.
On the docket?
Yes.
That docket, we're required by our notification requirements to have the red line strikeout version and that regulatory impact assessment. Those are prepared at the time we open for public comment, so they're available for that entire public comment period. When we send out those go delivery notices to folks that we're going to open a public comment period, there's a link that you can come to, to that docket page. And those regulatory impact assessments are required by APCE's regulations, and they require us to look at best practices, benefits of taking actions. There is a cost associated with that action, so they're really informative.
That docket is available on the board's webpage. I don't remember the full link. You can find it from our homepage, but if you look at the full link, see me afterwards, I can give that to you.
Okay, because I would like to see the synopsis, just what you just said.
Absolutely. It's a little bit more detailed than what I did just say, but should be relatively easy to read.
All right, thank you.
Any other questions? Comments? Or? There being no further statements or questions, this public hearing is adjourned. Next thing we need to do this morning is to have our regular board meeting of the Louisville Metro Air Pollution Control Board, and I called that meeting to order, and note that we indeed do have a floor, so you can vote this morning. Ms. Tally, are there any introductions to be made this morning?
We do have a new staff member on board, but she is currently training today, so we'll make a formal presentation prior to next board meeting. No other introductions this morning.
Are there any public recommendations to be made this morning?
No, Dr. Powell.
The minutes of the record meeting held on December 20 of 2017 have been published electronically and available for your review. They're relatively long minutes from that meeting. Are there any questions or additions to be made to those minutes? Hearing none, then we will accept the published version as the record for that meeting held on December 20 of 2017. Ms. Hamilton, has anyone asked to make any public comment this morning? Does anyone wish to make a public comment who has not wished to make a comment? Is there any unfinished business for this morning?
No, Dr. Powell.
Then, we have due business, which is the, and the subject of that is the public hearing, or the items from the public hearing that we just completed. Did you make the recommendation?
I did not.
Would you recommend what, would you tell us what the district recommends that we do with these regulations?
Thank you, Dr. Powell, and I think, with Ms. Tally's advice, I might make a recommendation on all of them. If there are any individual regulations that a board member would like to address individually, do that, but considering there were no comments on any individual reg, public hearing or otherwise, the district would make a recommendation on all of them at once, if that's okay.
And you would recommend that we adopt them?
The district would recommend that the board adopts all of the regulations from the public hearing. I don't know if I need to read all of those individually, I don't.
With the exception of?
With the exception of 720, which was withdrawn from consideration.
Well, true.
The recommendation is, the regulation as proposed by the district.
As proposed today, including those draft twos that I noted during the public hearing, those were all grammatical corrections in response to comments from the Division for Air Quality.
You hear the recommendation, and what is the pressure of the board?
My motion, we're going to accept the district's recommendations, except.
Or, the withdrawal of the ones, and the acceptance of all the others?
Right.
Okay, very good. Are there any, is there a second? A second? Any discussion about, or questions about any of the amendments, or any of the, excuse me, any of the regulations, or the motion? Hearing none, then all in favor of the motion, respond and say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, nay. Ayes have it, and the motion is passed. Did any of our committees meet and have a report for this morning? No committee reports. And we are to, the staff reports, Ms. Tally, the directors' report?
All right, we're going to do a review this morning. If everyone is comfortable in a room and you're comfortable, we'll see real children.
Loosen, bursting, trapped in the wall is now out. At least now quiet.
All right, we'll go ahead and set up the video presentation for that. Just some opening remarks. First of all, I'd like to wish everyone a happy 2018. I haven't seen many of you since last year. Hope everyone had a wonderful holiday. And as I mentioned, it is that time of the year, and so the director's report this morning will really be a 2017 annual report review for the board. And I understand that annual reports are typically a review and look back at the prior year, and we will do a fair amount of that, but it's also going to feel like we're taking a look ahead at 2018. We're going to talk a little bit about that also this morning. And we have to do that because looking at the work that we do as a snapshot presents a really incomplete picture of the work we do, and it's just not as informative when done just as a review. And so, because of that, we will take a look at 2018 as we do every year, because it's really a continuation of the work that we accomplished in the prior year that we're building on and moving forward into the new year. Our work, generally speaking, is a process, and it's rarely a one-and-done type situation. The work we do is interdependent, it is interrelated, it is based on what we've done in the past and what we think we need to do in the future, so it is an ongoing process. The work we do daily is impacted by the EPA, it's impacted by changing global factors, it is influenced by the work other folks are doing in the city, such as the Urban Heat Island Study, the greenhouse gas analysis and study, the asthma research being conducted, and then the work being done by the City of Louisville as a member of a hundred resilient cities. And so, other related research and policy initiatives also impact the work that we do and our path moving forward. The environment, pun intended, in which we work is dynamic and complicated. As I mentioned, the work we do, one thing builds upon and impacts the work, thought, direction that we take in other areas. And our ability to analyze and assimilate new information, and then to make tweaks, to make alternate actions based on this new information, is really crucial to our ability to accomplish our mission. It is not easy work. Different people from different parts of our community, and then different factions within the same community sometimes have different expectations about the work that we do. They sometimes have competing ideas about what can and should be done. APCE is tasked with listening to all those concerns and issues and implementing the laws and regulations under authority with integrity, professionalism, and as fundamentally aligned with the laws and regulations under authority as possible. And we must do all of that in a manner that helps us to always work toward our stated goal, which is to ensure healthy air for breathing and help local businesses meet air quality standards. And I know for some, those two goals may seem mutually exclusive, but they are not. And so, we strive every day to meet both of those. As we get set up, what I really wanted to do was, in the presentation, you'll see the first one, and I will read it, because I think it's important to do, but this was a statement that I made to our entire staff a couple of weeks ago, and I made it to the staff at that time, but it also applies to the work of this board, and so I want that to be taken in consideration as I read it. And this is what I said to staff. "The Air Pollution Control District had to make a lot of tough decisions in 2017, and many in our community did not agree with those decisions. Yet, everyone in this agency faced the public professionalism, character, respect, and honesty. And in the end, while many still did not agree, I think we gained their respect by the manner in which we conducted our business and ourselves. There will always be difficult decisions and disagreements. We must be willing to listen and to hear what is being said respectfully and earnestly, and then be diligent, thoughtful, and honest in our work with one overarching goal, and that's to help make the air better today than it was the day before by implementing the laws and regulations under authority as diligently as possible." And I said that to our staff too, because as everyone in this room, I'm sure, is aware, we had some contentious meetings in 2017, and I am just proud of the way that our staff and our board dealt with those situations, how we presented ourselves in the public forum, and how we addressed making the decisions that we made. We had three public hearings. We also had multiple presentations before Metro Council in which we discussed the ASRC modification request. We additionally had folks from Metro Council and the community coming to our offices, and again, we took the time to answer to the best of our ability all of the questions that they had regarding that, how we made our decision, how that process worked, and it's by that process that I think that we did a good job in doing the best we could in a difficult situation and maintaining a level of professionalism that I think is necessary for us to do the work we do. I don't have a question. Will it work from over here?
It will.
Okay. Switch out, okay. Dr. Powell, if you'd like, we're going to let the board sit over there. Do the presentation. Just to reiterate, APCE goal is to ensure healthy air for breathing and to help local businesses meet air quality standards. So, we start each review out by stating that goal so that we are working on a consistent framework. So, quick update on current NAC status. Probably self-explanatory, you can see that the ozone in yellow is, the first one is slightly shaded. We do have a 120-day letter out on that, but it has not been officially designated as non-attainment, although we fully expect that that will be the case. As I said, we have received the 120-day letter recommending that we be designated as non-attainment for the new 70 parts per billion ozone standard. We don't, we do not plan to fight against that. The numbers are what they are. We've re-designated to attainment for the 1997 Annual Plan for Tigger 2.5 standard. Louisville is currently designated attainment for not, carbon monoxide, PM 2.5 to 24-hour standard, PM 10, and airborne lead. We are designated unclassifiable for PM 2.5, the annual standard, but our monitoring data currently indicates that we are now below that standard. That is a 12-microgram standard. We are currently have a design value of 9.4. And then a portion of our county is designated partial non-attainment for sulfur dioxide, but monitoring data also indicates we are now below that standard. That is a 75 parts per billion standard. Our current design value for 2015 through 2017 is 31 parts per billion. You have seen this slide before, and it is just a trend history of our ozone, and as you can see, in 2015, we had actually gotten close to the 70 parts per billion standard, but 2016 was just a really bad year for us, and we are closer to the old standard at 75 currently. Clean air requires the EPA periodically review of standards to make sure that they protect public health and the environment. As I mentioned, the previous standard was 75 parts per billion. In October, EPA finalized a new ozone standard of 70 parts per billion to significantly reduce ozone air pollution and provide an adequate margin of safety to take at-risk groups. Another slide, which you have seen many times, but it's just important to reiterate, the development of ozone, the production of ozone is a combination of a superh, if you will, of not VOCs and the presence of heat and sunlight, and that forms ozone. And a particular problem in this community is that you can have a day where the same amount of pollutants are in the air, but based on meteorological conditions of heat and sunlight, that one day will produce ozone, and the same day with the same level of pollutants will not produce ozone. So, we have some things relative to our ozone situation that are out of our control. This is a new slide that we put up, put together as a daily air quality index, and it is a APY for all pollutants. And really what it shows is the green are good for each month, the number of good days, the yellow is moderate, the lighter orange is for, I'd say, are for sensitive groups, and then the dark color, which is none on this slide, are for unhealthy groups. And I think the takeaway here, and this is for 2016, is to look at the number of good days and moderate days that we have each month, and in this case, I think all of the days for sensitive, unhealthy for sensitive groups are related to ozone exceedances. The next thing, next chart is showing for 2017, and again, the number of good days far exceed, good days, the moderate days far exceed, those days that are unhealthy for sensitive groups, again, all related to ozone, I think, in this regard, and a lot fewer in 2017. to ozone, I think, in this regard. And a lot fewer in 2017. But I think it gives a better representation of the fact that, yes, we have work to do, and yes, we have some days where it is a problem for some folks in our community that are sensitive to air quality issues. But by and large, we have more good and moderate days than we do really bad days. Let's talk a little bit about the Strategic Toxic Air Reduction Program, the 2017 highlights. And so what we did was complete processing of requests from occupation by American Synthetic Rubber Company. As I spoke about earlier, that involves some very robust public participation and debates. And what I will say about that is, that is exactly how the process is intended to work. And so that debate was not unwelcome. It was appreciated. We got good information, good feedback from the community. And overall, the process went as it should. Additionally, we evaluated the environmental susceptibility of our Title V and STAR FEDU companies through annual compliance, any modification or expansion requests. And so we've taken a look at all of our STAR companies and their environmental susceptibility goals. In 2018, what we hope to do is conduct some community conversations. And in those community conversations, we want to include some discussion about helping the community comment more effectively on our permits. Our permits can range anywhere from very short to hundreds of pages. And so that can sometimes be very complicated and daunting in terms of the ability of folks to understand what's going on and make comments. And so these classes will be designed, the community discussions will be designed to help the community understand how to look at those permits, how to understand what they're saying, and then to ask us questions and make comments based on those permits that will be a lot more effective in helping them address real issues for them. And then we'll have some discussions about risk communication, understanding risk, how to look at the permits and the goals that we set relative to the actual risk that is out there for folks. And some of these will be done in conjunction with EPA. When I was at the Air Directors Meeting, I had some long discussions with the folks at EPA. They actually have someone who specifically works on talking about how to educate the public in terms of looking at permits and also in terms of understanding risk communication. So we will call upon their expertise, have them come in, and we'll set a close community meeting in 2018. And then we'll have some meetings to talk a little bit about the role of other agencies. And I just want to point out that APCD is one of few agencies, state or local, in the country that implements a program targeting toxic emissions beyond what the federal program does. APCD is seen as a leader in this area with other programs, and in fact, have been working closely with Oregon Department of Environmental Quality, as they have reached out to us as they work to develop their own air-toxic emission program. Again, a slide that you have seen before, but we have updated. We now have toxic release inventory information for 2016. There's about a year to lag in getting that information compiled, analyzed, and put out there. And I just want to talk about the important stuff here. So now we have a full year of reductions from our utilities with nearly a billion dollars of additional controls that Watson Lane put on, and then the conversion of our can run to gas. And so there's been a decrease in air toxics from our electric generating utilities of 83% compared to our baseline year we've been using of 2005. We have seen in all other sources, a decrease of 55% in air toxics, which is a total decrease in air toxics from 2005 to 2016 of 68%. And even though STAR is a risk-based program and not a match-based program, I think it's important to understand the total amount of mass reduction that has been made at both our electric utilities and all other sources. And those reductions, I think, are impressive. A topic that I try to keep the board up to date on throughout 2017, so just a quick refresher. RARE Project is being conducted by U.S. EPA. It's the regional applied research effort, and APCD is supporting that EPA research project, in which it's evaluating next-generation emissions measurement technology. Our air monitoring staff is collaborating with researchers to integrate what we're doing with our own air toxics monitoring data with RARE Project. And so it actually is a timing couldn't have been better for them to be doing research on the next-generation technology, along with us in implementing our own air toxics monitoring. And so it's providing some good feedback and a good opportunity to look at both of those technologies moving forward. We've also provided additional staff support from our industrial compliance area. They've been going out, pulling from the passive samplers and conducting that part for EPA on-the-ground support for them here. Additionally, we've had some meetings, and we will have additional meetings hosted by EPA, but will be community meetings to talk about this air research project that's going on with RARE, and then to talk about, as always, what APCD is doing with our air toxics monitoring. And so we'll have the opportunity to reach out and have the community get involved in understanding what we're going on and ask questions and stay up to date with that process. Talk a little bit about our air monitoring section and our 2017 highlights. And so I think the big thing here, and it's been an ongoing process over time, ever since our reorganization, we've enhanced staff capabilities. And so some specifics, we've added a supervisor for our quality assurance and air toxics program. We've added quality control technician two position for enhanced instrument diagnostics and repair. And we've increased our enhanced vendor training for advanced instrument repair. And so this is all part of the process of making sure that our staff are trained to the best of our ability. As technology changes, and we bring new technology onboard, and making the tweaks within that section that are necessary to keep it at the top of this game. We've improved our air monitoring network. We've added Carruthers, is that a middle school building?
Yes.
Carruthers Middle School site to replace our bait site. We've consolidated our South Week site into our farm training site. As everyone is aware, we've added gas chromatography system to measure air toxics. And Billy wanted to point out, and I think it's important to point out to the board and folks here, that more network site changes have occurred than any in this past year than any years in the past decade or so. So a lot of changes, a lot of good work going on as we improve technology, improve our staff capacity to meet the needs of helping to do what we say we want to do, which is to make the air better each day. Continuing with 2017 highlights, we've maintained data quality despite some heavy QA staff turnover. All of our QC positions endure some personnel changes. And some of that is to folks being stolen away by other air agencies. We had someone move out to an air agency out West. And then also about some Orion internal changes. So as we created the quality control tech two position, what we did was an opportunity for one of our QC tech ones basically to move up, which left a vacancy at the lower level. And then we've also had a new employee, a young man who is also in the National Guard. He's been with us about six months, but he's also been deployed with the Air National Guard for about three months out of that six. And then just recently found out that he's being deployed for four years. So he'll be gone from January to next February to do some additional training. I think he's learning how to fly C-130s. And so we've lost him for a year, and so we have another deficit. So we're working with HR to find an interim replacement for him and fill the other positions there. But even in regards to those vacancies and changes that have been going on, we maintain a high data quality and completeness despite those personnel changes. Our QC staff have collected 500,000 hourly data points, 30 million one-minute data points, and created approximately 7,000 data annotations for documentation. So the work continues, and we've done that while maintaining a completeness of over 90% for all of our pollutants. So just outstanding work in 2017 with a lot of changes and several opportunities. The goals in our air monitoring sector for 2018, we're in the process, and we hope to hear really soon on the hiring of an air monitoring chemist who will oversee the air toxics program and our VOC operation when we get the PAMs monitoring equipment up and running. We have purchased and installed, in 2018, we hope to purchase and install instrumentation for PAMs, which will cover VOCs and their precursors, allows us to speciate those VOCs, so we have a more in-depth understanding of the VOCs that are out there and how they impact ozone formation. And we have to have that up and running, I think, by June or July of 2019. So hope to make that purchase this year, get that equipment installed, calibrated, up and running, so we'll be prepared in 2019 to move forward. We also will enhance our meteorological network to support our pollutant knowledge base, and then, of course, fully staff our QC section. And all of this is just going to be important, particularly as we move forward with ozone, trying to meet that new standard. In terms of our emissions analysis, our 2017 highlights, the work that we do there that a lot of people probably don't see, what we provide transportation and area source sector emissions modeling to Metro Louisville for their greenhouse gas inventory. We've modeled project-specific mobile source emission reduction in support of multiple grant occupation applications throughout Metro. We continue to meet our requirements to model for transportation and form sheet where it is required for the work that we do. And then we've finally recorded 41 point source emissions to the national emissions inventory system. The goals in 2018 are to implement online services for reporting and analyzing point source emissions just to improve our efficiency, and then to use all of these things that we talked about to support our 2015 ozone shift development work. And so moving forward in that area. In industrial permitting, our 2017 highlights, just run through the numbers real quick. Our construction permits, we issued 11 construction permits, over half of these were to Title V sources. We had seven Title V sources and four FEDU sources. We renewed six Title V permits, Brown Foreman Cooper, ICS, GE, LL Flex, New Flex, and Sam Myers. And then we also issued three FEDU permits, including one new FEDU to Billard and Brasby as they expanded their plant. On our smaller sources, we issued 16 minor source permits, registered 36 sources, and exemptive other sources. Our goals for industrial permitting for 2018, and something we've been working on is to complete our building within the first half of the year. That process is well underway. Complete FEDU issuance and renewal, reduce our backlog of Title V permits by 67% to be two out of the three remaining backlog of Title V permits that we have, and then continue to maintain our Title V renewals within the regulatory timeframe, timeframe. Industrial compliance area, our 2017 highlights, we've done a great job. We've met compliance monitoring strategy, our senior mess amendment to EPA. We have maintained up-to-date reporting to the ISIS air system, and we perform audit-level inspections at 35% under our risk management or our RNP facility plan. Steve, what is the requirement for that?
I'm not sure.
You're not sure.
Actually, for the overall inspections, it's only 3%.
Right.
But the memorandum of understanding that was signed back when RNP was formed required that we do all of the inspections on a three-year rotating schedule. So all of our sources get inspections once every three years.
And I just want to put that in perspective for folks that we are, all of our RNP facilities do get on a three-year rotating schedule, do get reviewed, and that would far exceed the 3% that would initially virtual anything.
That's one of, RNP is one of those areas where we, as a local agency, are able to do something different. 80% of the country is covered by U.S. EPA in terms of inspections for RNP, and that's where that 3% goal comes from. That's where I see it is called on a national scale.
Talk about our goals for industrial compliance for 2018. And I went over this with the board, I think we were at the last board meeting, so we made some internal structural changes. And so 2018, we will incorporate our asbestos and gasoline vapor recovery programs throughout the industrial compliance area, moving them out of community compliance, and we just felt that was a better fit, made us a lot more efficient. And then improve our case documentation to better prepare for those companies that are somewhat uncoordinated, and that improved case documentation will help in our enforcement actions. We have very knowledgeable staff in our asbestos and gas, our veteran staff, and combining it with engineering section will just optimize their effectiveness. And then, as you would expect, it is easy to do work with companies who agree that they need to do corrective action. But for those companies that don't agree with that, our assessment that they need to make some changes, our ability to document that better, to do better investigation, and prepare our cases better, just make it easier for us moving forward in instances where we may need to pursue some legal solutions to the issue. Those changes, and we'll talk about that a little bit, just quick highlights in our community compliance area. So we issued 2017 368 asbestos and vapor permits and 90 gas vapor recovery permits. We also investigated 509 citizen complaints. And so the changes that we discussed of moving asbestos in our gas program to industrial compliance area and freeing up community compliance to dedicate their focus strictly on community concerns. And so we're in the process of hiring a supervisor for that area, and we'll be able to move forward with a more focused effort strictly on community complaints, investigating those complaints, and working those complaints either toward compliance or through our enforcement area. In terms of enforcement, 2017 highlights, we collected over $400,000 in penalties. You can see how those are broken down by the type of remedies, Title V FEDUs, and so forth. One of the reasons we're making some of the changes that we're making in our community compliance area, and then the fact that we are currently short in enforcement coordinator is back when we worked, when we worked really big cases that consumes a lot of match time and a lot of the staff time to work on those bigger cases, and it doesn't allow us the ability to work as effectively as we would like on some of the smaller cases. So getting that additional enforcement coordinator on staff, and then improving our documentation moving forward is going to help us move through that process, I think, a little better and a lot more efficiently. So this is the behind-the-scenes-type work that is just absolutely necessary for us to do the work that we do. And so a lot of this is work that we don't talk about much, and a lot of people may not be aware, but our administration, our component operations for our information systems and record management, in 2017, we processed 188 open record requests. We also migrated 88,072 electronic documents from our in-house document management system to the Hanson integrated EV system. And then in conjunction with that, we have recently led an RFP for the next phase of our document management system. And so that requires a lot of work, a lot of people are involved, not just our IT staff, but a lot of our engineers and other folks within the agency have been involved in that process. We have continued our work with Access Metro Project, which will then migrate from Hanson eight to Essella. We have continued our work with Access Metro Project, which will then migrate from Hanson eight to a seven. So this was, maybe be about an eighteen-month project, and this system will cover all of Metro. But I just cannot emphasize enough to you the amount of time and effort. The senior levels of our staff have had to dedicate to making this process work. So Paul Hall, Matt King, Brian Fraser, just to name a few, and not to mention folks, other folks on the staff that do the testing, that try to bring things onboard, that review it, have spent an absolutely inordinate amount of time working on this process. And in fact, Brian Fraser is probably one of the more qualified folks within Metro Government in dealing with this. And it's almost like he works for us to do it and not for us in time because his efforts are just incredibly intense in helping move that process forward. But we get benefit out of that, and we wouldn't be where we are without Brian. Just to give you an idea of some of the work that we take on internally to help pull this new data management system into place. Our staff has worked on complete configuration and data conversion mapping, building automation scripting, writing how far reports, conducting user testing, revise configuration and automation that's needed for testing, set up access control, acquire mobile devices where appropriate, training users, migrating data, and all of this work towards going live with a sale. And so just a lot of work going on. Once it's completed, hopefully it will make our work a lot easier. But at this point, it's made our work a lot harder, and it's consumed a lot of time from staff. The other side of our administrative program planning revision is our program planning. 2017 highlights, we did a lot of that this morning. So we proposed sixteen regulation revisions to the APCD board. We have developments submitted to US EPA and administratively complete attainment plans for our partial non-attainment for SO2. Members of our staff have served on partnership for Green City, steering committee, chaired the Urban Heat Outlet Working Team, served on the Green Transportation and Green Ground Spaces Team. Members of our staff have chaired the Regional Mobility Council and partnered with CHART to plan annual transportation service. Additionally, APCD staff has supported Office of Sustainability in their greenhouse gas inventory projects. We've participated in four comprehensive plan updating working groups. We've developed and issued a survey to gauge local knowledge and interest in electric vehicles. We've collaborated with community partners, including but not limited to Area Louisville, Louisville Sustainability Council, Sustainability Center, and Evolve Kentucky, which is an electric vehicle group here locally. And then we've joined the working team supporting the Louisville resilience effort for a hundred resilient cities. 2018 initiatives and goals and program planning is to initiate and begin the ozone reduction planning activities, which will include research and data gathering, stakeholder group process planning and outreach, help to develop, and we spoke about this earlier, and undertake refreshed community engagement plan, including a revamped AP, part of that will include a revamped APCD website, make it more user-friendly, and make it easier for folks to find the information that we talk about monthly. The workshops in partnership with US EPA that I discussed earlier. And then development of some additional information materials for community events. One of the things we heard from the community while we're doing this is their inability sometimes to find information that they're looking for, being able to present to them when we have community meetings. One page kind of files that summarize the important issues that were addressed at that meeting so they can have that as a takeaway for future discussion and keep on hand. And so those are all things that we've heard during the last year that we want to address in 2018. And then we, program planning continues to drive between global team efforts to secure funding for clean transportation projects, including EV and diesel emission reduction strategies. And so this is all work that that area takes on, and really kind of behind the scenes because on the front-facing part of that, you hear about the Sustainability Council, you hear about Office of Sustainability, and you may not understand the amount of input and work that APCD puts into all of these different efforts. Continuing with 2018 initiative goals, we want to continue to advance our quality goals through collaboration with our Metro and Community Bex Project. So we will continue with staff representation on the boards of Trees Louisville, Louisville Sustainability Council on behalf of our partnership with Green City, and then in Kentucky Clean Fuels Coalition. We will continue our leadership and participation with the partnership with Green Cities Team and Regional Mobility Council, and then participate in related local Metro government efforts, including transportation planning and mobility innovation teams, development review, and then the local Metro Government Environmental Education Team. Staff support and ongoing staff support for Louisville resilience working team. And that is, at this point, my primary, Michelle King, doing a lot of good work with a hundred resilient cities. And that's a fairly comprehensive effort across Louisville Metro Government. But the real point behind that is that we want to make sure that all of the expertise available here at APCD it becomes a very valuable resource to all of these efforts throughout our city and particularly to our Metro Government partners. Lawn curve for green air, just some quick highlights. And when we get to the end, the board will have the annual report for those programs. So I'll just run through these really quickly. 2017, we issued three hundred and seventy-five rebates worth of about twenty thousand eight hundred and seventy-four dollars. What this really means is about a hundred and thirty-three thousand pounds of reduced emissions as folks trade out those gas mores and trimmers for electric. We grew the lawn curve for cleaner air program, trying to get more commercial users into that program. And then our Grow More, More Less page will hit a three thousand likes milestone. For those familiar with social media, that's a fairly notable accomplishment. And just to note that Grow More, More Less page is one of Metro Government's most popular pages. Goals for 2018 is strategically increase lawn curve for cleaner air advertising in order to increase the number of rebates in new areas, so to get new folks in new markets. And then to readdress those areas where those rebates have kind of fallen off from areas that had been strong in the past. Then continue focus on lawn curve for cleaner air program, again, trying to get more commercial users out there. And as always, to develop new partnerships for the Grow More, More Less program. Program has been around for a while, that everyone here is familiar with. Kentucky Anna Air Education Fair, as always, care has participated in dozens of community events throughout Kentucky Anna, including Healthy Boots Kentucky, the Mary's Bike and Travel, the Wild and Scenic Film Festival, and Kentucky Derby Festival. Care has partnered with Metro Parks, we made this presentation to the board. And so these are kind of ground-level pockets that are on the ground on roads and parks. And it's just a continuation of our message to the community, not to idle in your cars. It's an easy thing that we can all do and all folks in the community that has a real impact. And so just another effort to keep that word out there and keep folks aware of the need to not idle in your cars.
It's okay to idle in your car, but don't put your car idle.
That's right. Well said, well said. What you do in your car, we don't care about. Make sure the car's not running while you do it. All right, thank you. Kentucky Air, Care has also implemented its annual media campaign, which features TV, radio, online ads, bus wraps, and event sponsors to promote the benefits of clean air. We do a survey with Care fairly regularly, and that survey proves that that message is penetrating out the community. It grows as we continue to get that message out there.